Well, these two are. You're a retired Laker, you know what that's like. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Everybody, we're all in the holiday spirit here, I guess. Um, there is no public forum speakers tonight, so we will move ahead to, um, our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Um, we're all called tonight. We have two board members, not everyone, Director Bolazquez and Director Atkinson. Um, hopefully they're in the forum with the rest of us. And I, can I get an approval of tonight's agenda, please?
So made.
By Director Bullion and a second. Second by Director Burnick, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, that passes five zero. And we'll go right into our first business item, which is approval of summer swim staff rates. So, board action is requested on this, and we have Director of Community Education Services Dahl here to talk to us about that tonight.
Good evening. So, we had approved, we do a two-year approval on our aquatics pay rates. So, we had rates for twenty-two, twenty-three, and then they were set for twenty-three, twenty-four for this upcoming summer. We did some research, mostly because our pools were down last year due to the road construction between the middle schools. So, we did not have a summer aquatics program. And, um, so we did a little bit of research just to see where other people were at with pay rates. Concerned that we may lose staff because we weren't able to employ them last summer and were wanting to make sure that they come back. And when we did a comparison, the rates that we had approved already for this summer were, um, slightly under those that are around us. So, we're, we're not as competitive as we'd like to be. We also grouped together two positions, our lifeguards and our assistant swimming instructors, which really are very different positions and should be at different rates. So, what we're proposing for this upcoming summer is to do a slight increase. Uh, well, one is to separate out our lifeguards into its own separate category, to do a slight increase to what those rates would be. And then also for our water safety instructors to do a slight increase on those rates. Those were the two that were below the comparisons with some of the programs that are around us that would have competed to take some of our staff from this past summer. So, we're not, we're not talking about huge increase, but enough that would align us with those that are around us and make it more competitive. So, when we do, um, start posting for these positions in January, we feel like we'll have a better chance at recruiting back some of the staff. So, I'm hoping to any questions on that or where they're at comparative to some of the programs around us?
Which, which programs around us did you use?
So, we looked at ISD one ninety-six and Shakopee. Those are the two that are closest that would have probably competed for some of our aquatic staff. Just as an example, so we are, essentially, we're just below what Shakopee is paying. Their lifeguards are at fourteen sixty-one, we're proposing fourteen sixty. Their swim instructors are at sixteen ninety-one, we're proposing sixteen ninety. Where currently that was set at sixteen thirty-five, so it's a slight increase there. One ninety-six is still a little bit higher than us. I think they're at fifteen is where they start for lifeguards. And they're a little bit lower on the water safety instructors at sixteen. So, we'd be a little bit higher there, a little bit lower in lifeguards. So, it put us right in the mix of where those programs are at. So, tonight, we're just asking to, because we're making a change to what was already approved for this summer, to approve those increases, and then we'd be looking at setting up another two-year agreement after this summer for the twenty-four, twenty-five, uh, I'm sorry, yeah, twenty-four, twenty-five, and then twenty-five, twenty-six.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you. Can I get a motion to approve?
So made.
By Director Olstead and a second.
Second.
Director France, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that passes five zero, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And next, well, we can move on to our study session. So, can we, can I get a motion to adjourn the business portion of the meeting transition?
So made.
By Director Bullion and a second.
Second.
By Director Burnick, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes five zero. Um, we'll go to our study session and start off with our purpose and agenda with Dr. Thomas.
Do we have to close the business meeting?
Yes, you do. Oh. I thought we, I thought we adjourned. We just adjourned.
Just adjourned.
Oh, okay.
So, I think.
Open.
Everything's open, right? Nothing's in closed session, but we. I'll, I can call the study session order, yes, thank you.
No. I'll make the motion to call it to order, please? Don't you have to make a motion?
No. No. I never do that to start a study session. Yeah.
So, we're under rocks.
We just go.
Sorry.
No, it's okay, we're doing a lot of movement today. And we want to follow protocol.
Yeah. I'm just, yeah.
So, and I'm.
I didn't make the physical transition to here from sitting there, just my head is still.
I thought maybe we were switching at the last minute, and when she stood up for pledge of allegiance, she said, oh, that's cool.
Yeah.
So, our purpose and agenda for tonight, with this added meeting is where we're at.
Gotcha.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, board. Uh, tonight, um, we have just a couple of, uh, topics for you this evening for us to, um, have a work session in. Again, it's our opportunity to have more informal dialogue and conversation, um, around strategy for a variety of topics. And tonight, we would like to bring forth, uh, a second conversation of our legislative platform draft. Also, would like to bring forth, uh, the topic of business or finance scenarios as a result of some conversation from our last, uh, board, board study session. And then we'll have a series of policies to review, um, for the board this evening. Um, a lot of fours, fives, and sixes that are in queue. So, that is the content for this evening.
Thank you. Uh, we can move right into our legislative platform draft if you.
Sounds good. Let's open this one up.
So, executive committee met to, um, work on this based on some of the, um, other legislative platforms that we're seeing out there from associations and kind of fitting what our needs are.
Yeah, so, um, a couple of weeks ago, met with the executive committee, uh, and we shared, um, draft proposals of MACE, MSBA, AMSD. Uh, we also had our, um, legislative agenda from the last cycle as well. And so, we started with those, and honestly, uh, there's not a lot of significant changes across the board on a, on a variety of professional organizations. Um, I will also preface the fact that, and you might have seen this in the last week's Fridays Five, um, there, there's not going to be this overwhelming amount of money in cash, and so it's not going to be about that. Um, I think it's, uh, going to be a lot more around language change or practice changes. So, um, what you have here this evening is just some draft, uh, language. And you'll notice in the red is where we, uh, made some recommended changes. And I would say fairly straightforward, uh, no, no substantive changes. The, if I, if you, if I may, I'll just kind of walk through, um, stabilizing educational funding, no changes there. Looking at the challenges and, uh, to getting and attracting diverse, uh, talent pool of folks in education. That is something that we've, uh, just stressed to maintain because the state did make some significant headway there with some of the changes, uh, to HR rules and practices with Pelsby. School safety, uh, continues to be top of mind for many, uh, in our state. And one of the areas that we revised was, uh, the notion of additional long-term funding to not always be pulling from LTFM. So, it's kind of been a little horse trading, uh, with the state. And so, we're looking for something outside of that so that we can protect LTFM aside from what's happened with where there's a safe, uh, uh, safe schools. And then, one of the areas that we talked about, um, was the funding to be sustainable and equitable, meaning it meets our unique needs, can't be a one-size-fits-all for safety protocols at the state level. Now, certainly, um, well, I'll add the fact that we, uh, added the language around cybersecurity. We're seeing an increase, uh, uh, attacks, if you will, in, in K-12 education. And so, this is something we felt was going to be really important. And when we talk about equitable, we don't want a one-size-fits-all for safety unless it's something that would, uh, benefit us from an economy of scale. So, for example, um, if the state was to go in to purchase, um, a, a partnership with, uh, a cybersecurity provider, for example, and then through the state, we could le- leverage discounted rates by our choice. That is something that we'd be open to, but we don't want the state to impose a certain type of safety measure that each individual district might benefit from because of the local nuances. And then, along those same lines of safety, uh, you all are well-versed in the conversation that we've had around SROs, really focusing on language that, um, uh, removes the notion of categorizing SROs as agents of the district. That was probably the biggest challenge, um, in this last legislative, uh, session. And many districts across the metro, um, are having these conversations. I would say that our outstate colleagues, probably not so much, because many of them don't have SROs. They all work with sheriff departments, et cetera, so it's a very different kind of relationship. This is going to be centered more so on many of us here in the metro. And we also took out the mental health support on the title to just talk about increased student support so we can diversify the, uh, the layers, uh, beneath. Obviously, still in, ensuring that we have some inter-agency collaboration to address the, uh, social-emotional needs of our kids, the mental health needs of our kids, that's, that's our first bullet. But then also looking at some of the related services staff, so our counselors, social workers, chem, dep counselors, psychologists, deans, interventionists. The change here is that we had for, um, I think we had et cetera, and I think some conversation was, let's spell that out um, so that we are very explicit about what that means. And essentially, what you see here is where we made priority investments just this past spring for this current school year. So, we essentially carried that forward into our legislative plan. So, nothing necessarily new for us, but just really wanting to emphasize the state to really make that similar investment so that we can relieve where we have to subsidize that at the local level. So, that's where we, um, changed there. And then the last portion, uh, we kind of went back and forth with this, and, and so, you know, reducing mandates to enhance local control and flexibility, that, that kind of speaks for itself. But the notable change here was around amending the Minnesota Data Pr- uh, Practices Act. And a lot of this was due to the notion of where we were getting significant, um, data requests. And if you all recall it, we had a work session, we were having a lot of conversation about this. And I know that, uh, Christie, um, uh, shared a document with the board recently about a week or so ago, kind of quantifying some of the, um, the asks. And, you know, the language that you see here also was derived at a time prior to us bringing on a position that would help alleviate some of the burden of the magnitude of the requests. And we, as a, as administrative team, um, are actually leaning towards seeing how that plays out, um, in practice. Uh, when you take a look at the structure of our, of our legislative platform, there are pretty high, big, um, impact, uh, legislative, uh, components. Not to, uh, uh, say that this isn't important, but at the scale of others that we've had here, we're just not as confident that that's where we want to, you know, if we had to put priorities out there, this wouldn't rise up as one of the biggest priorities, particularly with our recent investment that you all approved, um, just a, uh, several weeks ago, actually, um, or a month or so ago, maybe, to bring on an additional FTE, which this individual has hit the ground running. And, uh, and really, we're seeing the benefits of that role, um, already playing, uh, starting to pay off. So, we would like to explore that a little further so that we don't necessarily bring forth a legislative agenda that may not really be something that carries equal weight or is of top priority. So, like to just pose that to the board for some discussion tonight as well. Uh, certainly, uh, Christie is here tonight if you have any questions around that, um, impact as well. So, that's the legislative platform that we'd like to bring forth to you all, that we would, um, if, if the board, once you all kind of, make any kind of revisions or edits, that we would bring this before the board in January for your vote so that we are, uh, well in time to have our days at the Capitol. And those will start to come out, um, I think, starting late February. I'll turn it over to the board for a conversation.
One question I have is, um, are there, were there any other things that were close to the top of the priority list that, um, that you want to share? Was there anything that, that, I don't know how, how exactly this gets compiled? A lot of it is, um, I'm just wondering if there was, if there was another thing? If, if the, you know, that amending, uh, does end up falling by the wayside? Would there be something that was kind of around, you know?
Yeah.
In importance?
Yeah. Great question, Director Bullion. Um, I, I wouldn't say that there's anything that was of top priority to replace that. I really do believe, and, and I want to be very clear too, a lot happened this last session. So, very grateful of what happened this last session. I would say, if you're asking me as a superintendent of, of what we have here, what's of top priority? Um, I can, I could answer that question.
Okay, I'd like that too.
Um, but I wouldn't say that we have anything to backfill. We're now looking to add, less is more, if you will.
I agree. I agree, thank you for that. And maybe too, Jessica, since Enrique's not here, from the, that session that you went to, was there things that was stressed? I'm just curious, because the whole process for putting this together, you know, what we received from MSBA, it's long.
Yeah.
And so, I, I would love to just have kind of like, um, high-level how, I mean, because this is wonderful, you know? It's just, you know, I'm just wondering if you can kind of share how we get that whittled down from what they, what all the things that they have to offer, or.
So, I'll, I'll, uh, do you want to answer the first part of the question, Jessica?
Put you on the spot.
And then I'll talk about process.
It's why I brought my delegate assembly guidebook. Uh, I can pass it around if anybody wants to, anyway. No, it, yeah, good question. I mean, this is obviously statewide versus our district, you know, our prior, or our platform. But, like, the one thing, um, that I noticed, so we have SRO language in here, obviously, and our, our platform regarding that is very specific to language versus the MSBA resolution, which again, isn't legislation, just a, a resolution, and it was a lot more broad in terms of, you know, clar- just overall clarifying language with what SROs can and can't do. Ours was, ours is actually more specific, which I personally like because it's, because it's specific.
Right.
To our district, because to Dr. Thomas's point, not every district even has SROs, so they're not really as concerned-ish about that piece of, um, legislation, if it does go to that. You know, things like, you know, borrowing from LTFM, um, that was kind of brought up in terms of eliminating, um, taxes on that, which I think would be helpful. Not necessarily specifically stated here, but it, it, it was discussed at the state level. But, that was, yeah, I mean, it, a lot of it is very much in line with kind of what the delegate assembly talked about as well, with a lot more specific things to charter schools, which we obviously wouldn't put on our platform because we're not a charter school district, but, or charter school, but, yeah. I would say it falls pretty, pretty close in line, and ours is a little bit more specific to us. Like you said, one-size-doesn't-fit-all, and I think that applies to the overall platform as well.
Amy, if I may add, and Director Bullion, that in previous years, um, the list was a lot larger. And, um, sometimes, um, you know, it depended on what the AMSD and MSBA said and stuff like that, and we kind of fell in line and sometimes adopted the same language. But having gone to the legislative sessions in years previous, the interesting thing is, is that in the, in this past school year, um, some of those were actually in there and passed in legislation. So, it did naturally kind of whittle it down a little bit. And normally, when, when I've been involved like three, four years ago, they would pass down things like, you know, no one funded mandates, and that would be a very broad thing, and then we would pick and choose which ones we wanted. The one thing that I didn't hear this year, and I didn't read it in the update from the legislative session or the platform that was discussed, is that in previous years, uh, there was a huge push, particularly with, um, outstate districts, that they wanted to eliminate the need for tech levies and actually build in technology funding from the state because that was part of the equitable piece. And then, um, the levies also from borrowing from Peter to pay Paul, borrowing from the general fund and stuff like that for LTFM and other things. So, um, that, that was a primary. But as far as the SROs, I'm sure that Director Olstead, you heard that even though they may not have SRO contracts, a lot of those outstate districts still have to pay a portion, uh, to the police stations. They're just not formalized in an SRO contract. So, and they use their safety levy that came down, and one of the issues that is a continuous issue and that we do kind of build into this, and that's where the maintain and provide long-term because what school districts are subject to, and this kind of comes out, and it used to be a lot more forceful, is that when you, like, have a safety levy, the legislature in, and that's in there for that year, has to reapprove this stuff. So, every year, you're, you know, especially in the biennium years, you're kind of in a ping pong of whether they're going to continue it or not. So, there, so over the years, a lot of the language has been, become more generic, and they've said, hey, listen, if you're going to give it to us, just make it stable so we can plan, you know, that sort of thing. And that's embedded in the school safety piece. It's also embedded in the staffing challenges on the word maintain. So, we kind of normalized it ourselves to that this time instead of going into each individual item.
It's interesting you say that, Director Franz, about the technology aspect. It's interesting, we didn't, at the delegate assembly, there was zero talk about that exact thing. And I didn't really even realize it until you said that, that there was not one word spoken about any kind of like technology assistance or technology investments or anything like that, other than.
Did they bring up like the equalization factors? Because that, that, that might be where they're bearing it.
Yeah, maybe.
Because that way, it's not, it's, it's, it's more loose, so they're not scripted to tech. But if you, if they have the focus there, it gives the autonomy then to our outstate or outmetro folks to, to utilize that resource.
Twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, and twenty nineteen, um, I remember, A, that the top categories for outstate was, uh, was free lunch, which we got now. It was equalization on the tech. So, so those, uh, districts with, um, uh, lower tax capacity capacities and things like that didn't have to go out to their own constituents in order to give, uh, technology support to students and staff. Uh, and then safety, safety was huge, and they, they didn't want it to be this, again, this ping pong.
So, Director Bullion, to your process question, um, generally speaking, each professional group, such as MSBA or the delegation, um, group, um, AMSD, MACE, whatever it might be, these are almost like running records. So, you, you kind of use these as your starting conversations to see what got accomplished in previous legislative cycles. But, you know, I'll be working with AMSD heavily on formally an agenda. I, I'm now on the board of directors, and so, all of the work of the soups then, that then gets rolled up to the board. The board then prioritizes based upon what we've heard from various soups around the metro area. And then we make our draft, um, legislative agenda, which then we adopt as a board. I am bringing those conversations back to our regional soup areas, so pretty much in the southwest metro. We all then meet and talk about what's happening, you know, for our area as pertains to what's happening with AMSD. And we begin to hear the themes that are emerging, for, for example, the Scott County soups. And then we're also at scale. And then, through scale, we're hearing where, where's the county going, what's priority, what, you know, taxes, all that kind of stuff, safety. I will say, now, those of you who've been around, you, you might see this a little differently, but I don't typically experience counties having aligned legislative platforms that support local school districts. This is the first that I've seen an explicit, um, interconnection between Scott County, uh, Scale's legislative platform and the school districts here. Namely, around, um, I would say, our stabilized funding, um, agenda and the SRO language. Uniform language, almost verbatim, to support schools. So, that's a huge message from the county. And I think that's a direct result of showing, you know, the impacts of what happened in the last legislative cycle, um, how pretty much all of us in Scott County got our hands tied a little bit with some of the language with SROs. And I think that rallied the larger community around a shared interest of safety for our kids. And, you know, I think the conversation was, now, how do we take that and continue that momentum to bring a broader, deeper, louder message to the legislature this cycle? So, that's how this comes back here. I meet with senior cabinet. We also then use this as a starting block to understand kind of any changes from your respective areas, Tammy's group, you know, uh, Michelle's group, et cetera. And then we take our big themes that we've heard from our respective groups. We modify ours and then brought it to executive cabinet to say, this is the direction that I would like to bring to the whole board. Anything I might be missing that you think is going to be really important that the board might ask about, push, you know, et cetera. And that's how we get here tonight. So.
Very good.
That's a, that's a quick flyover of how that, um, whole process works.
One thing I'll touch on, just because it, uh, you brought it up about partnering with county, because we did talk about that in our executive committee meeting as we kind of made the changes in red, I guess, and kind of. One thing we talked about that did not land on here is of great importance, but, and was something that Scott County's, Scale's advocating for, is addressing truancy with students. And so, while we still obviously believe in that and feel it's very important, it didn't make our cut because we probably don't have the rights of truancy that a lot of other districts have.
Right.
Still important, you know, still something that we, um, are addressing in our schools, but, um, and partnering with Scott County on, would that be an example of, of.
Absolutely, absolutely. Because when you look at truancy, um, models that are effective, they're rooted in county systems. So, you know, through ed neglect, and so, how does that, so, Health and Human Services is going to be their advocacy platform for those dollars to come into the county. That's how we would get the indirect support should we need it. But it's not on ours specifically because we don't have poor attendance compared to maybe some of our neighboring districts.
But it's still something we'll partner on, yeah.
That's interesting, because I don't see that as something on a legislative platform. I see that more as frat plan.
Well, it's, it's on a legislative platform because. Well, it's, it's on a legislative platform because it needs DHS funding at the county level to address the systemic family issues that might be contributing to their inabilities to make it to school on time.
Interplay between the agencies, if they may.
Yeah, interagency, yeah, yeah. Now, one would also maybe question, why isn't, because this did come up, and it has a question with AMSD, SOUPs, the likelihood of moving universal meals to Health and Human Services' budget? Because what you're going to start to see, and it's not going to happen, by the way, spoiler alert, but what you're going to begin to see, though, is these, this nuance of political language. So they're going to talk about, so they, they already are forecasting breaking the bank on universal lunch. You've heard this, right? So, so they're going to bring in additional funding for universal meals to sustain that. Well, guess what that public statement sounds like? We're giving schools more money.
Yeah.
So, so these little things are starting to come out, and I just want the board to be mindful, to listen with your third ear, because a lot is being said with very few words, and it's not always exactly what's happening, like boots on the ground. So you might get pushback from constituents of, you know, why would we give more money to schools from a local tax base when the state's announcing they're giving you more money? Well, that's because the state undershot the funding formula for universal meals, and so they're needing to put more money into that mandate that they've passed in this session, this past session. But those details will be omitted, you know, just be, we're increasing funding for K-12 when you look from year over year. So your average consumer locally isn't like, you continue to get more money, but you're coming to us and asking. So just be careful with the nuance of language, and as you hear things, let us know, we'll give you the broader context to make sure the whole story's being shared, not just cherry picked versus that sound good politically.
I appreciate that context too, because so often, and I, and I think that you guys do a really great job of bringing forth the whole stories, it's just really important because when you hear bits and pieces, people make up their own story, and it almost always isn't accurate. And so we need you as directors to be able to make the right decisions, and so appreciate just even the heads up on that.
Well, to be fair, it actually happened this year too, because when they announced the funding for school district, it became very distorted because they included all that in there without the mandate and where the money needs to go. So, and that's, we're running into that problem right now, it's if you just gave you all this money, and so you don't need anymore. And the problem is, is we can't use the money to do the things where we're really, that are, that are required, and the areas that they were put in were also new areas that added the mandates. So we had a kind of a, we didn't have a zero sum game, but in some areas it was close to it.
Yeah, and, and I, I had this conversation with someone in our community last Friday evening, and, and it was a good reminder to, to me, to also remind myself, give context. And so last week in the Fridays five, I put out an invite to our community to kind of follow the legislative agenda essentially, and kind of bringing our community along in this conversation, and if you have questions that we're going to be talking about it tonight, so please come out and, you know, whatever, just email us, whatever you have any thoughts. And I made a statement in there, I think I, paraphrasing right now, I said that there were nominal investments made this past session, and a majority of the money came categorically, such as special ed, universal meals, EL, et cetera. And the question was, you know, why did you call the investment in education nominal? Like kind of push that aside? And I think that's a fair question, because I really didn't provide context, so full admission, I told this individual that, you know, yeah, it, it's not nominal. However, when you put it into perspective of the unfunded mandates or underfunded mandates that are coming, of which we're tracking about seventy-four of them or so, give or take, not all of them have funding strings attached to them, but there are many that do. We also know that our utility costs are going up, and as we get ready to settle contracts, those aren't going to come for free. So a lot of the expenditures that we have to cover, that increase from the state becomes nominal, because we have to use that money to pay for these unintended expenditures, if you will. So it was a good reminder to me from this community member to ensure that a simple word that I used, when taken out of my mental context, because I didn't put all that in there, they walked away feeling as though I was not appreciative of what the state gave into education, which is not the case. But in my head, I was like, well, at the end of the day, it's almost like a zero sum game for us. We, we really didn't net a whole lot in the general fund. Certainly netted a lot on the categorical side of things comparatively, proportionally, I should say, more on the categorical side of the house. So it was a good reminder to me, so I thank that community member, and, and it just, it's a good reminder for all of us that speak in full context, because when you don't, people walk away with, not that you're lying, but just a different perspective of, oh, that's what you were saying? Oh, that makes sense now, and they were appreciative too.
Right, no, that's good. So as we're looking at this legislative platform, I think what we're talking about is that the changes in red would stay with the exception of the last bullet.
That would be our recommendation to the board.
I would, I would agree with that.
Why wouldn't, so I've got a question, because we had to hire somebody else to do this. Why wouldn't we keep the last bullet in?
Because I would like to see how those costs are recuperated, because this individual will be doing this plus additional HR support, so we want to see how this plays out so that we're accurate in our statements on the legislative agenda. Like, do we find a way to increase our efficiency to address this? And as we continually move in our system around being responsive, being transparent, et cetera, will we, will this kind of take care of itself? In the absence of that, we are needing greater flexibility. So I think we'd like to see how this plays out.
So the current language in the Data Practices Act for public data requests says that we can request the FTE cost of the individual, as long as you can actually define that.
There are, there are certain costs that we can bill for. Christie, do you want to speak any more greater details of this? But there are certain costs that we can bill for and that we can't bill for privately.
The way we've been doing it, and the way I understand the language, is that if we have large data requests that are over a hundred pages, then we can start charging what it would cost staff time, and that has to be the lowest hourly rate. So another new learning that I had was that if it's over a hundred pages, and we've done that work and processed it, and we submit an invoice also for the employee time, but then they don't take over a hundred pages, then we can't charge for the time, the employee's time. So it's very rare circumstances that you can charge for that, because if they're only going to take like three pages, then...
The person who requested it, you're saying?
Correct, yeah. So it's, it's mostly, like in the sheet that I gave you, my notes, those were mostly charges for paper copies or electronic copies.
There's other, I mean, there's other mechanisms for charging back other than paper, other than how many pages it is. And that's what I was kind of focused on. So when, and, and the other thing that, that happens when you get these data requests is they're, what showed up in the summary wasn't really the depth of all the, of all the AV, step one, step two, step three, that was actually requested in there. And that's where I like to see that dollar value recouped. We don't want to deny the public the data, but we also don't want to encourage abuse of that system. And that's, that's where my concern is, and that's where I'd like to try to leave this in.
That's worth a review of that. What I've just come across, that's been my findings, but I'm no means an expert in the state statute, so.
I remember the school district student bill.
Okay. So we, we can only charge if people retrieve copies, and we cannot charge for inspection. And we can only charge for the cost of actually searching for and retrieving, we cannot charge for redaction. And the redaction is what's taking up the vast majority of our staff time. So when we think about pulling all the records, printing them and getting them ready to go, taking a fraction of the time, when we spend a significant amount of time reviewing all those datas and redacting for them, we can't charge that time. We also have to charge the lowest rate for what employee could be doing those services, so we can't even charge for what employee is actually doing them, we have to charge for the lowest rate of that. And so to Christie's point, if somebody requests what turns out to be, you know, thirteen hundred emails, I'm quoting that maybe from a recent experience, and they choose to just review them and only take ninety-nine pages, we can't charge for any of the retrieval or copying of all that, we can only charge the twenty-five cents or fifty cents for the ninety-nine that they took. So in those situations, to Christie's earlier point, that's when we're seeing the least amount of our costs being recouped, but in all situations, the majority of the time is the redaction piece that we cannot recoup those costs on with the current statute.
And with that in mind, I would like to leave this item in there, simply because if they're really taking ninety-nine out of a hundred, then it is, it is an abuse of resources here, and people need to understand that, you know, their tax dollars paid for these resources, and when you can't use those resources for what they're supposed to be doing, then, then it's going to cost the public more anyways. So, but there are times where, you know, I mean, here's the thing, is if you get a lot of data requests in for the same type of stuff, then we should be creating efficiencies and making that generally available so to eliminate the need for individuals to do those data requests, because it's hard on those individuals too, to stop and ask for that information on a regular basis, if that's indeed what they need.
Yeah, and, and you all can correct me from wrong, but like, we don't, we don't seem to have a serial request.
I know, I've seen that.
So, so that's not being abused. And, yeah, I, I, I think, this is a pretty complex topic, and, you know, some of it can be addressed by state language, possibly through statute. Some of it, I think, is going to be really just keeping tight parameters at management. And, and, and maybe it's probably a little bit of both. So, so again, if the will of the board is to keep it in, it'll, it'll remain, but if not, our recommendation is to, to see how we can tighten the management protocols around this, and with resources, what does that look like when we're able to respond differently? And does that change the dynamics? So I'll, I'll leave it to the will of the board as to the direction you want to go. With thumbs, I would just request that we do thumbs, so we know very clearly.
Yeah, do any, any other clarity from board members? I mean...
If we delete, say, if we delete that bullet point, add it back in? If we want, or is this, this is in stone for, once we vote on it?
We're voting on it at the next meeting.
Right, so like, we cannot change it after that.
We can change it.
Between now and January.
Yeah, we can change it. Once we vote on it, it is what it is, that happens January eighth, I believe. Yeah.
Because, I mean, this is just our legislative platform. We can't, I mean, we didn't this last year, I realize, but I mean, like the one we currently have, but there's no, I guess I'm asking a process question.
Well, I'll, I'll just say this too, there's not, I mean, this isn't an issue that's unique to us, right? Everybody's getting data requested. There is no other district that I'm aware of that has this in their platform. So, so again, and I, and I'm not trying to be negative around this, but if there's no political top cover to carry this, one district is likely not going to have, change the Data Practices Act, it's not going to happen. So that was another conversation internally of, well, there's no traction around this, there's no solidarity around this from neighboring districts or just anyone else, we're not going to go carry this as a singleton district. You know, we don't have that level of influence legislatively, so.
And potentially reevaluate in a year.
And then reevaluate a year when we see, you know, the impacts of our management and staffing that's changed. So I think we would know more, you know, next cycle too, so.
I have a question then. When we redact, and also we have to pull in sometimes legal resources to make sure we're doing so correctly. When I look at, I mean, I looked at our utility bills already, and I went, holy goodness, through the year. But when I also look at our legal fees this year, they've been quite a bit larger, even in tumultuous times in the past. So is there a way to make this a little bit more prescriptive? And I don't mind being the only one, I understand it probably won't get considered or whatever, but I do think it, it starts a conversation. And that's what I'm, and, and the conversation is going to be, you know, emotional for some, but I think it's something that we need to deal with, because the cost of that redaction and the cost of the legal fees and the cost of things that, that are fairly significant over time, even with an additional person that we have that we're still paying for because of this, that, that, that needs to be considered. Without, doing so without denying the ability for the data to be requested, because we are, you know, we are a taxpayer-funded entity, so that's not asking to be reduced, but we are asking to do something to create boundaries around the potential for abuse, and that's what we've been seeing across the country.
I'm trying to hear the question, and I, there's two couple of...
Can't we narrow the statement from this so broad to just redaction or legal fees or whatever to charge back, or something like that?
I mean, you all can put whatever language you want here. I would say this, you were, you had a, you made a statement, and I just want to check it out, maybe Emily with you, about legal fees being higher than what we've had in the past? And is that, are you saying, are you suggesting that's correlated to the data requests that we're getting?
Well, I, I know that there's been some that have had to go there, more so than the previous years. I don't know, I can't, I, obviously, it's also attorney-client privilege, we couldn't see the invoices and all that kind of stuff, and I don't want to, that's not part of this. But I'm saying, when those costs do rise above a threshold, and there are redaction, which takes a ton of time, and then there's legal consequences of those redactions, if it isn't done correctly, then we're held responsible, and then we've, and I, and I know from previous experience that we've had to contact counsel to get advice and how to do stuff and all that because of the types of requests that have come in. How do we recover those costs? And how do we prevent the abuse of the resources and the money that we cannot recover? Is there a way then to take that and make this a little bit more prescriptive to certain types of cost recovery for public data requests? We're never going to be able to charge somebody the legal fee, obviously, because that's our choice to call the attorney, but we do need to. So, so what I think you're getting at is, is actually kind of what you're proposing, saying, let management take this on.
saying, let management take this on with a new employee for a year to really figure out what our situation is and understand the problem that we want to advocate for, to be specific and granular, to really decide, is this on our platform or not? And if it is, what exactly are we dealing with? How often is legal getting involved? How much are we paying this employee that we're getting, we're only able to recoup minimum wage for, or whatever it is? You know, that's my take on this. I don't know if that's accurate, but that, I think that's why we're bringing it up and then saying, hold on, nobody else is advocating for this, let's figure out what we really need.
Can I, can I make another, just, and that's just my experience through the years, is that the first time we put anything on here, it gets looked at, it never makes it. The first year that, oh, even if everyone did it, it's kind of considered, but it takes a few years to keep it on our legislative platform in order for it to gain traction also, so. That's, that's another thing I'm kind of thinking about strategically, but if we're not ready to do that, I'm just saying that, you know, again, I've been hearing about it and seeing it, not just in our district and our surrounding districts, but across the United States right now, and it's, it's, it's quite a topic of conversation in some areas.
Yeah, it is. It's a concern.
And it's costly, and it's resource-intensive. So, and I, I, obviously, the will of the board, but I just wanted to add that in, because I actually thought we were very politically brave to add that on there, and I was kind of proud of that.
And I think along with that, so, in that email that Christie sent us, which, with the reports, that was very helpful, thank you. I'm looking at it on Amy's computer, because I left mine at home today. So, I'm trying to get a sense of all the expenses, so, legal fees, the printing fees, is, um, like, there are a few on here, like, book requests, so like, is that, like, the ad hoc committees that look at book requests and we buy them the books? Does that go into this, or is that separate?
This was, this was data request on, um, book challenges, not the actual process of book challenges.
Not the actual challenge. Okay, thank you, that's helpful. So, what other monetary, well, that's what an expense is. What other expenses are along with that? The legal, the printing, and then before we had this, this other person, it was basically the employee's time.
Time, time. Time was, I, I would, I would just say, time was the biggest on, on a multitude of levels. So, it, yes, it was about, um, going data mining, finding the, the information, because, um, most data requests are broad, and so you're looking for a needle in a haystack. And, you know, and there are, there are certain people in our community who have made multiple requests on different topics, and we're, we got to a point where we just said, just exactly what are you looking for?
What are you looking for?
You know, quit making us look for this needle. Just, what is it? And when they're able to do that, we can shave off time very quickly, much more efficient. And, you know, and I don't know what the rationale is, why people want to stay, you know, ambiguous around certain things and kind of send you all over the world looking for, for data, but that's really helpful to our community, for our community, when they give us very specific parameters, language, words, et cetera. I would say the other piece, particularly with the thirteen hundred-plus email kind of things, um, in those broad scopes, it is time on redaction. Um, and this, you know, prior to having an F T E, you know, the senior cabinet is not going to let Christie, you know, sit in a dark room by herself hours on end, redacting. Like, we're all chipping in as a team, because that's what we need, that's what we do, that's what a team does. So, I would say time for redaction was a huge one, and then I would say, yes, there's some complex requests that come in, um, where we might need to consult legal. Um, and, and I would say, given the complexity and politicization of our community, things are probably unnecessarily complex, because folks are afraid of lawsuits and all that kind of stuff, and, so we just have to, um, be very careful. And then lastly, nominal, but lawyers get raises, too, so we're paying more, you know, for hourly rates for consulting compared to where we were five years ago. So, so it's a multitude of things, and so, before, before going down, and granted, this might, to Mary's point, it might just sit idle, you know, uh, and, and, and do nothing. So, I, I, I would really like to, you know, before it gets traction, I should say, but I would really like to kind of quantify the return of this investment that the board has approved, um, so that we can be better stewards of the language and kind of direction that we would recommend to the board. And again, full disclosure, prior to having that, we were here. You know, I think we were, we were at this table, and I think I was pretty explicit, we were at our wits' end with this, and I think there was some, some very pointed word shared that night. We're not, like, completely solved, but we're, we're optimistic about the resources that you've approved to allow us to adjust our management style around this topic. So, to not get too far ahead, we want to analyze that and come back to the discussion. So, I feel like I keep saying the same thing, sorry. So, with that, Chair, I'll turn it back to you, um, for thumbs?
Yeah. Any, any other, Julie, do you have any?
Um, well, I do. I mean, I just think that if we don't know, I mean, if we're in the middle of analyzing the costs of the district and the efficiencies that possibly I'm hearing are starting to put into place, I think it's really hard to ask for something if you don't really know what you really want from it. I mean, I think you've proven that it is a task and a cost, but it feels like we're starting to quantify it and starting to understand the problem of how to make it an easier process for staff. So, I would rather wait and have a better analysis of that. I know personally, I've never seen a summary like that. You know, maybe I, maybe I missed it in the years past, but I felt like that was really helpful. And you can't track that. Have you ever seen one like that?
No, I don't think, um, I mean, I've, I've seen them from before, but they've never been this long and robust. And again, I want to emphasize that the first line of the request is not indicative of the rest of the lines within the request, so sometimes there are requests within requests within requests.
Sure, yeah.
And I get it. I mean, book entity, I get it, I just, um, I've, I've seen it, and if we don't want to do it, that's fine, I just thought I'd bring it up and challenge.
Good discussion.
It is, it was good discussion.
Yeah. I'm glad that that person is working out and that it's lightened, lightened up.
She's still with us.
Yeah.
We scared her off, yeah.
So, I think the will of the board here is to remove that for now, and consider, you know, what it looks like in the future.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. With that, we'll move on to our future agenda topic from a previous study session, which was around, um, another, which you did a couple, another funding scenario on the five-year forecast, just to kind of help paint the picture for us of what we're looking at. Thank you, Tammy.
Sure. Um, yeah, the request was, we took the six hundred and twenty-three dollars and added back the three hundred dollars that currently is in the L O R, so the, um, local optional revenue, get to the nine twenty-three, what would that look like? And then, just as I was on a roll, I did another one at twelve hundred dollars. Um, and basically, when you look at these five different scenarios, um, the third one is the only one that we're not going to see, um, a deficit spending. It's just a matter of when that will happen. Um, so if we did the nine twenty-three, you're going to start seeing reductions in the fund balance in F Y twenty-eight. If we do twelve hundred dollars, then you're going to see it in twenty-nine, but eventually you're going to start seeing deficit spending and using fund balance. The only one that, that doesn't happen is if we fully pass a refund, the maximum amount that we're allowed to, which is one thousand seven hundred and seventy-nine dollars and fifty cents with an inflation factor. So, it's, I mean, can we do it? Yeah, we can, um, reduce our expenses if we absolutely had to, but we would be reducing programming for kids at that point, or laying off staff, or doing something that's going to reduce expenses, because it's not going to be a significant amount of increases.
Tammy, if I could just, because you've already produced one A, one B, and one C, and those numbers, when I compare them, match to what was done at the Finance Stone Hall and what had been given. So, the two new ones are in yellow, and Table one D, which is the fourth option, since we're not, we'd have to go to a referendum and just do the same exact amount, and that also, I just want to, even though you have a formula allowance for two percent, two-point five and two-point five, there's no inflation with that one.
Correct.
Okay, so it's just like we have now, and even though we still get the extra three hundred, we wouldn't be able to go out and ask for that, we'd only be able to go out and ask for the six hundred, so, um, there you go. So, it's, it's, again, it's, okay.
Yep. Anything other than, um, one A would require a vote.
Okay.
One A is, is just...
One B would be a board vote.
Um, a, a blank vote. So, the referendum, you can renew, you guys can renew it as a vote. We'd have to ask the voters in the community for anything, oh, yep, other than one B.
Okay. So, one A, we do nothing. One B, the, the board re-ups the one time only, the six hundred and twenty-three, or whatever it is.
C, D, and E would require...
C, D, and E would all be voter-approved.
We'd have to put it on the ballot.
Yeah.
And essentially, one A would be two, um, at some point, either we just don't have a referendum, or we'd have to, in F Y twenty-nine, ask for something.
Yeah.
In the, you said C, D, and E are voter-approved, when would that vote then, electorally?
Technically, the current referendum we have ends in fiscal year twenty-nine, so we'd have to, um, go for a vote in, by February, or November of twenty-eight, in order to get it for fiscal year twenty-nine. But, um, we can ask for, um, a vote any time. So, if we're, we're looking at increasing it, we can do that next November, the November after, the November after. But I think, no, we're deficit spending right now. The only way we're going to get additional revenue is more kids or... Or reduce expenses. There are options, and we're just, I don't know where we're going to be.
Um, with the, with the expenses, how did you factor in the inflation of a lot of our costs, the natural inflation?
So, we included, um, we assumed increases in salaries, um, and then we used, um, basically for contracts, we did, well, for buses and utilities, we used six percent, because that's typically what we've, we're seeing over the last several years. Contracts, we, depending on whether they were insurance or just general contracts, we used either two to three, and then supplies, we used two and a half.
That goes on with the inflation index that we've been using and predicting.
And again, we'll adjust these as things happen. If the inflation happens to change, then we can adjust those inflationary factors we're using. If we end up with more kids, we can recalculate the revenue based on enrollment.
And as I, as we learn more from the state recently, it makes me a little anxious about the two, two and a quarter, two and a half projections from the general fund, but, I mean, I, those are numbers I wasn't supportive of using, you know, I agree with you on that, but as we learn that they're not sitting as well as they had been.
Yeah, I think, um, so they have a max of three percent tied to inflation, unless they change that, so you would get at least two, no more than three, so...
Which should be stabilizing.
Correct.
But assuming they can get two, yeah.
And I tend to be a little more conservative, so I didn't budget three at three years.
Yeah, I agree with that.
That's a wise thing, especially given what's going on.
Well, it's, it is great to have all these scenarios to paint the per, picture for us, so I appreciate that.
I could have added another one at fifteen hundred, but it would just...
Be between.
Right. It would just extend it one more year before you saw deficit spending.
It looks, well, if we go with our policy of eight to twelve percent on the fund balance, it looks like we drop below that fairly quickly, even though we still have a positive fund balance until twenty-nine in the very first scenario. But it looks like we drop below the eight percent by fiscal year twenty-seven or twenty-eight, almost all of them in which we aren't deficit spending. Is that a correct statement?
Uh, yeah, you'll get to be close. You calculate it, uh, you take your fund balance, and it's a percentage of your total expenditures, so as your expenditures change, that percentage in your fund balance is going to be a little bit different, so, yeah, we can, we can calculate it out, but, um, we'll stay pretty close to not going under that eight percent, but again, we'll be deficit spending. At some point, we're going to hit that point under eight, if we continue to deficit spend. It's just, maybe thirty or thirty-one.
Well, in the first two scenarios, we get there by twenty-eight.
Yeah, pretty quick.
Yeah, we get there pretty quick, and then last couple of years. And the next two scenarios, when you have an amount with inflation, um, you get there a little bit slower, but obviously, with just the nine twenty-three, you get there by fiscal year twenty-eight. So, that's the only difference. That would not be a good option for us, because it's, and there's no inflation with that, so actually, the nine twenty-three, ninety-seven is, when you do the net present value with inflation, that's a heck of a lot less when you get to twenty-seven.
Yeah, I think we'll just, in the next few months, we need to have some serious conversations on where we want to go. If we decide we want to put this on the ballot next November, we have to notify M D E that we are by June. That's the route we're going to take. And then, if that's what we decide to do, there's a lot of work that needs to be done.
How many districts in the state right now don't have a tech levy?
Um, I think I actually have one.
And I, and I, that's a surprise question, and so I'm not expecting to have that in the...
Yeah, on the five-year, um, forecast, that last sheet, I had, there's actually quite a few that do, um, some a lot more than others, but...
I know some of them weren't renewed, but they still have the benefit of getting it.
So, seventeen on this list. Now, this isn't an inclusive list, because there's three hundred and thirty districts in the state, and I think these are all mostly within our area. But they range from, you know, two hundred dollars to eighteen hundred dollars. But they range from $200 to $1,800. 137 is the smallest.
So between that and those that actually taxed to the maximum capacity when they did do their last referendum, I thought we were the only one that didn't have both of those in the state. That's what it was originally.
Hmm, okay. Well, there's a few more.
That was a combination of them. And that was, that number was calculated a few years ago.
Yeah, and again, it doesn't have to necessarily be a tech levy. It can be a safety levy. It can be a capital levy. We just have to put together an analysis of what our needs are and see which direction we can... From what I'm hearing, putting together the budget, we do have a few needs. Thank you for doing this.
Yeah, thank you. Brings more context to our budget discussion as we look forward.
Yep.
Uh, I think we're ready to move on to our governance policy. Thanks, Amy. One review per three policies. So we've got a few policies to look at for the first time. They came out of the Policy Committee meeting last week. And we can go through one by one if we want. We'll be approving them at the next board meeting, right? That's correct.
That's the idea.
Yeah. With the new pattern, according to policy.
But these are just firsts.
Firsts. So, so...
Well, it won't be, I think, what you're asking, there's not going to be the whole series anymore.
That's what I asked last time.
Yeah, 201, we approved that it would be a... Two public conversations because the work gets done in Policy Committee and comes to the board with recommendations. Gives us two times plus public, two times to give input.
If there's no substantial change, it's recommended by the board.
Correct. So Emily, Emily, do you want to address our process here? Just that we brought these forward a little sooner.
Thank you, Chair Crosby, members of the board. So we have quite a bit of policies that we're bringing forward to you that we reviewed at the October Policy Advisory Committee meeting for a really rich and depth discussion. And then we brought forward all of the track changes from that discussion to the meeting last Thursday to get just a second thumbs up to make sure that all of the track changes that were discussed at the meeting in October were accurately reflected. We got all the committees' thumbs up to bring them forward to you today. So would you like me to go through each one individually? Or is there any specific questions, different ones?
That's after everyone else. I've already gone through and through it four times myself, so...
Yeah, I went to the policy meeting, so I, I got to experience that for the first time.
So I guess my, my ask for the board would be versus going through each one, can we just go to each one and say, are there any questions on said policy? And if none, we'll go to the next and go to the next and the next? And then pause where we need to go down? Okay.
Perfect. All right, so 403, discipline suspension dismissal of school district employees is driven a lot by statute and legal requirements. Are there any specific questions on 403?
We have, we have parents a lot. Didn't we decide we were going to do parents/families or parents/guardians? Because kids don't live necessarily with parents.
Where is that?
Well, yeah, I mean, it's, I marked it in a couple of them. So like, for example, on this one, 403 on the second page, so like number 6. Students, parents, and/or other persons in the school community. I didn't know, weren't we going to do like parents/families or parents/guardians?
So that was a conversation at the TNL Advisory Committee when we were looking at policy. And I'm open to that here. The conversation was some parent, what's it?
Yeah, I was going to say, we have not had that conversation in Policy Advisory Committee.
No, this was the TNL where we had this conversation.
I apologize if I'm getting things mixed up.
No, that's all right. But I think the point is well taken. And that is, when we say parents, sometimes it's a guardian. It might not be the actual parent. And so the question is, should it be a good practice for generally applying to all policies to say parent slash guardian?
Because we actually do...
To be inclusive.
Yeah, saying parent slash guardian in some places. And then in other places, it's just parent or parents.
I'm for consistency.
Yeah.
I'm for consistency as well.
Yeah, so, just a thought.
So we can go through parent slash guardian, which captures both.
I'd like to recommend that we change it to parent slash legal guardian to ensure that we're speaking about the authorized guardian.
Perfect.
Very good.
Yeah, who can, yeah, make decisions.
Perfect.
Sort of a...
All right. We'll make more of that.
Specific questions for 403 or recommendations? I'll make sure to make that adjustment for the next meeting. For 404.1, this one, we did make a couple of different changes to make sure it's a little bit more clear that it's not just about employment. It's also about volunteer background checks. Any specific questions in regards to this policy? Hearing none, going to 408, subpoena of a school district employee. And just minor changes to this one. Hearing none, 410. We also cleaned up some of the language to make sure it was a little bit more clear what the policy was covering and got the references in there. But again, not a lot of substantial changes to this policy. 420, employees within infectious conditions. Again, not a lot of substantial changes to this one. Just adding the references and legal, cross and legal references. Hearing none. 506.3, we're, we are recommending with legal's guidance to rescind the policy.
Did you ever add any...
Can we get a little more context on that?
Yes. So first and foremost, there's a significant liability for our staff to be performing breathalyzers. It is recommended by legal counsel that we utilize our partnership with local law enforcement to do so. Also, there is a financial cost to keeping active breathalyzers on hand. They do expire, and they also are not as efficient if they're not upkept and properly used. Since we have limited resources, limited staffing, it is not legal's recommendation that we ensure that we have staff that are up to date on training on how to properly administer a breathalyzer, nor to have those type of breathalyzers on staff and just instead rely on our partnerships with local law enforcement. So the policy was, was out of date in terms of what legal recommendation is. So the recommendation is to rescind the policy.
So if there's a scenario, just so I understand, right? If there's a scenario where there is a concern, you would, obviously, that would be procedural. But playing it out, because we're removing this, I want to understand that. We would call in legal or law enforcement?
Most definitely. And we would do so despite our relationship, SRO or no SRO. That would be consultation or bringing in of law enforcement, both during school day as well as where this probably more often was implemented. But even in that scenario, I can't recall a time when we've actually been the facilitator, administrator of that. It has been all my time, recollection, under the direction of law enforcement.
That was also the feedback we received at the Policy Advisor Committee. While having it on hand, administrators relied on partnership with the local law enforcement to administer.
So this matches practice. Yeah. There was comments at the Policy Committee from a parent perspective, not from a board perspective, that personally, I loved the threat of coaches and teachers having that. But I understand the liability issue. Liked students to know that it could happen at any time at a dance or... It still can. Yes. And hopefully, it will be because the threat is respected.
And, and know that in those large situation events that you refer to, dances and homecoming prom, those types of things, we continue and have had that relationship with law enforcement and that presence with them there physically as well.
Questions? Hearing no others, 514.1. Some, some changes to make sure that we are in compliance and in alignment with the Minnesota State High School League and also referencing that in the cross-references.
Do we, should we add any kind of language in this policy that says kind of like what we just talked about? Like, I mean, we talk about chemical use and abuse. Should we put something in here that administration or teacher staff can call law enforcement to administer a breathalyzer? Or like, should we take language from that to put it in this one?
I think it's in there.
It is in there.
Is it in there?
I'm sorry, where is it?
Very sorry.
Like, or 2, it says the process.
Sorry, where are you?
Uh, page 30, well...
Under 3.
Under reports?
Can I see the other school district action? I went to the way bottom.
No, I, I think there is overlap. I don't think it's, it's, it's very distinct or direct, but there is overlap.
Under, under reports, 2, no, number 4, under reports?
It's kind of been all over. There's number 1 talks about if you, you know, if a district employee knows, here's what to do.
Couple of different areas.
Number 2, if you have reason to believe, here's what to do.
District action, number 1.
And that states that, too. And then 4 is...
Certifices.
Yeah, okay.
My question was on the final, the language change there between third violation, student, it previously read, student shall lose eligibility for one calendar year. Now it reads, student may lose eligibility for one calendar year. I'm assuming that has something to do with the statement below about consequences follow that MSHSL were applicable. But I just want to understand that change a little bit.
Yeah, great question. Correct. There's some flexibility in the Minnesota State High School League depending on what time of the school year it occurs and the potential... Help me, Director Franz. The remedies that the students, the students complete to...
It could be different based upon, based on circumstances, based upon when it occurred. Things like that.
So if they complete those per the Minnesota High School League, they, they could potentially come back to the activity. So this, changing it to the "may" allows for that flexibility for us to then follow the Minnesota State High School League guidelines and not be as severe in losing an entire year without that flexibility.
Okay. Makes sense. You know, the, the chance to rebuild and...
Yeah, and the guidelines are, are prescriptive on the types of things that could result in a reinstatement.
The other thing I like about that is it's just real consistent across the state, right? So we're, we're being equitable in our policy.
I have a clarifying question. I think mostly because I don't have kids at this age yet. Under reports, under 1E, so it says such discipline may include immediate suspension initiation. It outlines like the possible consequences. And then under school district action, where we just were, our second, third violation. I guess my question is if...
So, so you need to draw the distinction between activity consequences and general?
Correct. So, right.
I didn't mean to interrupt.
Yes, I know that distinction. My question is, yes, you're correct. So, but if you're suspended, you can't play at all, right? Or is that not the case?
Yeah, that would be the case for that particular, for that particular date of suspension, that discipline, any activities during that time. But what this goes, then when you go further down, number 4, that actually is, is an additional consequence.
Okay.
Up to 25% of...
Thank you.
So...
That's where my confusion was.
Yep, so you, you face the consequence on the day of or days of, but you have up to 25% for that first offense.
Or not up to 25?
It is 25% in addition to, so it's, so the calculation for a number of events for that particular season is then done at that point. So it's not only the day of that consequence. And that's with chemicals, the suspension from school, to your specific question, that comes on from any other disciplinary action, including that. But other disciplinary action also results in a suspension for that particular activity. So if it happens on a Friday and there's a Friday game, it's that, at a minimum, it's that game.
Right, okay. Thank you. That was my personal, thank you for the clarification.
I would love to see the Minnesota High School League develop a positive peer pressure model.
When we talk about... So when we talk about chemicals, we're talking about alcohol, toxic substances, controlled substances, things like that. And then, I'm sorry, moving ahead a little, but in 516, for example, we talk about the medical cannabis and herb, cannabinoid products. Should we put that specific in here as well? Or is that implied?
It's illegal because they're...
Controlled.
Yeah.
It's under 18 and also we have the...
Because of the age.
Yeah.
Say that again? Sorry, I don't mean to be...
No, it's good.
It's okay. So those would actually be considered for students illegal, under the illegal substances, because they are still not legal for their age group. So that's where it's defined under the school districts drug-free workplace and drug-free school policy.
Okay, so we don't need to mention it by name?
What we're trying to, what we're trying to do as the Policy Advisory Committee is try to limit the amount of places that we have similar or things defined and cross-reference where they're originally defined so that we can limit the amount of potential discrepancies between definitions. Even if it's the slightest change, it can really add some confusion to the, to it. So we've been trying to just cross-reference when possible instead of repeating definitions in multiple policies. Because what we saw with the cannabis, for example, we had to go into multiple different policies to update that. Whereas if we try to continue to, to have definitions linked back to kind of the master definition, then we'll have less policies to update should things change.
Yep, makes sense. Thank you.
Did I summarize that properly?
Yes, yes. And it's, so I, I understand what she's saying. And that was a question that came up in the Policy Committee. That cannabis actually falls within the definition, not only of controlled substances, but also in, under the influence and several, and I'm using, I'm paraphrasing, and several other areas. So instead of trying to mention every single type of drug and stuff, that's...
We'd be here all night.
Right.
Thank you very much for that.
Any questions or feedback of 514.1? Moving on to 516, medications. Again, just adding in new language around cannabis and then some minor language edits and legal references and cross-references added. Any questions on 516? Moving on to 516.5. This had recently been updated over the summer when the changes were made, but we just noticed that we didn't include the title under the definition. So we made that update and added a link to the cross-reference. So that's only minor changes there. Any questions on 516.5? None? 518, very minor changes, just with formatting and adding legal references. Questions or suggestions? Alright. 530, anonymization requirements. Again, very, very minor changes here, just adding the legal references and cross-references. Any questions or feedback on 530? Moving on to 605, co-curricular activities. We just wanted to make sure it's very clear that it didn't include community activities, so we're very specific about what this policy included. And then, we, going back to that definition question we had earlier, we had this language in multiple different of our policies, and it wasn't all matching. So we had to make sure that matched for the 38, and then added the legal and cross-references. Any question on 605? Feedback?
Can you clarify community activities?
So I think the main thing there was like play, distinguishing that this doesn't apply to play. I think there were some concerns with the committee that sometimes our co-curricular feels and looks very similar to community-based activities. So we just really wanted to make sure that we're distinguishing between these are school-led community, or co-curricular ones versus the community.
It means school-sponsored, because when they're co-curricular, under, right, Lake Savage area schools and not non-school-sponsored, like, Heart Lake Athletics for Youth, that sort of thing. Because that was a, as Director Herman just pointed out, that was a topic of discussion in which people kind of use terms different ways.
Right, thank you. Any other questions or feedback for 506? 506.1, very minimal changes on here.
605.
605.1, sorry.
I had a question. The last page where it talks about innovative programs that the school board wishes to encourage, what would be an example of that? Have there been any in recent years that, I was just curious? The very last page of that policy.
I'm not aware of any, Dr. Edwards, are you aware?
Would that be considered like when we've done the, when Jeff Marshall has come forward with sports where we partner with other communities, right? Or activities where we partner with other communities that were...
Because this mentions the board specifically, that the school board wishes to encourage.
I think the intent there is that you certainly have that prerogative to recommend based upon demand that maybe the Activities Office is not receiving from its constituents, but you are receiving from the broader constituency.
Like boys volleyball, frisbee.
Pickleball.
And many of those are, the Activities Office is responsive to the interest. But I think this is put in there to give you some...
If I wanted to bring pickleball to Heart Lake Savage area schools...
Make a case for that.
Bring that up on a future...
I was just curious, it just stood out to me and I didn't know like what that example would be.
Is that a premonition for what's going to happen?
Water basket waving, something like that. The thing?
It is a thing.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions about 605.1? Okay. 605.2, we did make some substantial changes here. One of, one of the bigger topics that the committee talked about is trying to reduce the amount of needs that we would potentially need to open up a policy to edit it. So instead of listing out the activities in the policy, including the policy where the district is required to post that, so that we can post them and make changes to them each year on the website versus having to reopen up a policy every single year. And then making sure our definition is aligned at the end and adding legal and cross-references. Any questions or feedback on 605.2?
I noted, sorry, the district website will posted the list.
I think that was brought up last time, and there's also a missing comma in one of these that I didn't see still missing, but good catch. They didn't put it in there.
Be perfect for the Policy Committee, just because you found that.
Well, I say death to the Oxford commas, and I see Oxford commas everywhere. I cringe every time. So I don't know about that.
It would fit in well with the grammar of Bruce in...
I'm sure.
Any other feedback or questions for 605.2? 605.3, very limited changes again here. And then last but not least, 605.4. And just some limited changes there, making sure the definition was updated at the end and adding legal and cross-references. Okay, so to summarize before the next meeting, 605.2, I'll edit that grammar and the sentence where it says district website will posted. And then in all of them, I'll search for references to parent to add slash legal guardian. Anything else that I missed?
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, thanks for your work on that. Any informational items from the district vendors, board directors?
I have two.
Okay.
So first of all, I wanted to bring to your awareness, as we talked about earlier, about legislative changes with the Earn, Sick, and Safe Time legislation. As we anticipated and shared with you earlier this year, that some of our vendors will most likely be passing along that cost to us. We do have Teachers on Call who is adding 1% to their administrative markup in response to the additional workload and cost that it's incurring for them, for our substitutes. So our markup effective January 1st is going from 27.85 up to 28.85. We did have a meeting with them. We are one of the lowest administrative markup fees for our comparables, and they are asking all of the districts for a 1% increase in relation to ESST. So I just wanted to bring that forward to keep you in the loop of the impacts that we're seeing coming through from the legislative changes. And then also for a future topic agenda, I'd like to bring forward an update on self-funded insurance. We're seeing more and more concerns about mega specialty pharmaceutical claims coming through and the potential liability for self-funded school districts. One of the platforms that Dr. Thomas mentioned earlier, the group that I'm a part of is advocating for is some state and federal solutions for this to help minimize the risk to smaller employers when it comes to the mega specialty pharmaceutical claims. So I'll be bringing forward that as a future topic at a board meeting to dive deeper into what it means to be self-funded and how our plan is operating.
Could you also do me a favor and bring you a description of the formulary that is included in the PVM options that we currently offer to put that in a perspective? Some formularies do include some theories for that. I know that ours is very robust, so...
We do have quite a robust, and we do have a third party to help us with some of our specialty pharmaceutical claims. They're paid to health, but there are quite a bit coming through. They're still very substantial and big risk.
Is that also included, by the way, in the lobby on those commercials that say, hey, if your insurance company can't help you, call us directly? Bringing it forward in a future...
I get it.
Mary.
It was a joke.
I don't have any joke over that, but that bugs me when I hear it. Thank you for that, that'll be an interesting update. Anything else from board directors? It's been a holiday season, everything.
Thank you.
Thank you.